Good morning. Welcome to the Millennium Challenge Corporation. For those of you who have not met, my name is Daniel Johannes. I am the CEO of the Millennium Challenge Corporation. And today, we have some special guests from Zambia and Niger. Let's say hello to them. We also like to welcome our US Ambassador to Niger, Madame Bissa Williams. And this morning, I'd like to take this opportunity to talk to you about some of the highlights for the first quarter and the decisions made by the board yesterday. First, on the highlights, we've had a very good quarter. I went to Kavver to sign our first second compact with the country for $66 million, which is primarily concentrated to help that country secure in water and sanitation projects. What was amazing, in addition to the compact signing, was I attended a half-day workshop or seminar that was sponsored by Kavver government, which probably talked about how to make the country more independent from foreign aid. Graduated from low-income country to LMIC, and they are in a path to be graduating to middle-income country where aid is no longer needed. So, they have been great partners, they are a great model for the region. Alan Petrokov, a board member, and I also traveled to Ghana to see the completion of the first compact, where we invested over $550 million, invested primarily in three sectors: agriculture, infrastructure, and education. In education, we built over 235 schools, primarily middle-class and high school. And in fact, I mean, it was a number of those kids, it was heart-touching. This are kids that never had classroom facilities before. They were educated under a tree. And then also, I visited with a number of the farmers that we trained. In Ghana alone, we have trained over 65,000 farmers, the use of modern technology, and also provided those farmers with microcredit. And also, we provided them with over 600 kilometers of road so that they have access to markets. And of course, at the last day, the highlight of the day was primarily the inauguration of the George W. Bush Motorway, a six-lane highway that is expected to cut transportation time by almost 60 to 80 percent. So, our friends have done a great job in implementing the first compact as well as creating the conditions to make sure our investments are sustainable in the country. So, kudos for our Ghanaian partners. And in regards to the board decision, yesterday, the board made three important decisions. Number one, they approved a $2 million funding for Niger threshold program, primarily for education. Number two, the board approved a $355 million compact for the Republic of Zambia. It's a great program, particularly given yesterday was International Water Day, that brings MCC's commitment to water sanitation projects globally to about a billion one. As you know, water is a very precious commodity globally. About a billion people do not have access to clean water, and 2.5 billion people lack basic sanitation services. As you all know, the burden for waterfalls on the shoulders of women and girls, who often have to travel anywhere from 15 to 17 hours per week trying to bring water for their families. So, from a timing perspective, which is perfect to get it done in International Water Day. And this particular investment is going to assist over a million to Zambians in the country, and I'm looking forward to go to Zambia next May to sign the compact. And finally, we had a very robust discussion on Malawi. As you all know, we signed the compact with Malawi about a year ago. And after the July incident, in which 20 civilians were killed by police, we put an operation hold on the compact. And we have been having a lot of discussions with the leadership of the country until about December. There has been some progress made by the government. But in the last 90 days, the government have gone backwards, both on economic governance as well as democratic governance. This is inconsistent to our expectation, particularly as it relates to good governance and the rule of law. So, the board made a decision to formally suspend the Malawi compact. It is up to the Malawians to change course. And the board is expected to meet again in June. And if circumstances change for the better, I think it will be positive for Malawi. If in fact, they do not change course, then the board might have to consider terminating the Malawi compact. Unfortunately, it's probably one of the best-developed compact in our system. It was expected to benefit about 6 million Malawians with total economic benefit of about $2.2 billion. So, it's unfortunate, but again, I think we leave it up to the leadership of the country to change course. And our panels will go in detail about Niger, Zambia, and Malawi in a few minutes. And finally, we discussed about Mali. As you know, in the last 48 hours, there have been some developments in the country. Some elements of the military have seized power. What we do not know is whether these young officers are supported by the entire military establishment, or they're just making a case to the public. The president is still in the country, and the situation is extremely fluid. Again, the actions that have been taken by these young officers are inconsistent to MCC's commitment of good governance and the rule of law. We have halted operations in the country until we understand the situation better in the next few days. So, we'll get you posted. I was in Mali a couple of months ago. In Mali alone, we invested over $450 million, concentrated in two areas: agriculture and modernizing of the Bamakwe Airport in Mali, where we are extending the runway and building one of the largest terminals in West Africa. It is six months away to be completed. So, I hope things change for the better, so we could complete the projects that we have begun that could benefit the country and the region. So, with that, I'll stop here and take a few questions before I turn it to Chuck Cooper, our Vice President for Congressional Public Affairs, who will moderate today's discussion. Yes, sir?
My name is Guy Afton. I'm with the United States of America, 2017 Project Cast Point. I want to congratulate you guys for saying that you're gonna stay with commitment to free and fair election and good governance. I am very happy for that. We will support you.
Thank you, sir. If there are no questions, let me also mention that I neglected to mention that happened the first quarter, that has to do with our budget. All right. The proposed budget for MCC is $898 million, which is about the same amount that was enacted in 2011 and 2012. So, we are extremely pleased, given today's economic environment. And our commitment is we'll spend every single dime, every single penny to make sure that American taxpayers are getting the best returns in their investments. In the last two years alone, we have had eight countries that have completed their compacts. And many of these countries are in a path to replace aid with investment with the private sector. And also, we are building the next set of emerging markets that will be great and very stable trading partners for US businesses. So, I just thought I'd let you know that because there's been a lot of discussions about budgets, but we appreciate the support we're getting from the administration, from Republicans and Democrats in Congress. All right. Thank you very much. That is yours, all right? Thank you.
I'm Chuck Cooper. I'm the Vice President for Congressional Public Affairs for MCC, and we wanted to convene a panel discussion to give you a little bit more information about what happened at yesterday's board meeting and talk about the board's decisions and some of the things that we're working on here at MCC. And I am pleased to be joined this morning by Andrew Mayock, who is a Deputy Vice President in our Department of Compact Operations. Andrew's portfolio is East and Southern Africa, and he's going to be talking to us about the new compact with Zambia. And we're also joined by Sheri Cram, who's a Managing Director in our Department of Policy and Evaluation. And Sheri is our point person on the threshold program. Sheri is going to be talking about the Niger threshold, the new investment in Niger through the threshold program, also talk about our newly revised threshold program and how that's being applied with regard to the development of the threshold program in Niger. And finally, we're going to have a conversation with Jim Parks. Jim is the Deputy Vice President for our Department of Policy and Evaluation, and Jim is going to talk to us about the board's action yesterday with regard to Malawi. So, I wanted to start the conversation with Andrew and talk a little bit about the compact with Zambia. Andrew, you and I have talked about the fact that Zambia is such a water-rich nation, but one of the major constraints to growth in Zambia is water and sanitation. Can you talk a little bit about what the situation is in Zambia with regard to water and sanitation?
Sure. I think as we move through compact development and the Zambians selected six potential project concepts, it really came down in our working with the Zambians that there was a high return, and the highest return when focused on the situation of water in Lusaka. And what you see there is a problem that you see across Africa, is the rapid urbanization in Africa, and the inability for the infrastructure to catch up with that urbanization. So, what the Zambians faced, just a couple of quick stats for you in the group. In 1964, at independence, Lusaka was a town of 100,000 people. Today, it's roughly 1.8, by formal stats, probably a little more like 2.3 million. By 2035, it's expected to be 5 million people. The infrastructure investments that went in in the water sector came in in the 1960s and 70s, so it never had an opportunity to really catch up with that really rapid growth. So, what you've got is dilapidated infrastructure. How that shows up is very unreliable water for those that have it, and a number and a big chunk of the population that still needs it. In addition to that, and special to Lusaka, is endemic flooding. That happens due to the geography of Lusaka itself, and that's another problem that we sought to address for the compact.
By my count, we have now developed 26 compacts. And I'm curious, from a compact development standpoint, what lessons that we have learned over that compact, over developing those compacts have been incorporated into the development of this compact with Zambia?
I think the team has really benefited in working with MCA Zambia in understanding the lessons that were learned in the rapid startup that has been MCC and MCC's young eight years of existence. And a couple of things that came out of that experience are, number one, just project readiness. So, it was a very rapid startup and movement and development to get programs up and running and get them functioning. So, in Eastern and Southern Africa alone, we had examples where we were still doing due diligence, full feasibility study, and project design inside the five-year timeframe, which made it really hard and really heightened completion risk. So, one of the things that we did to adjust for that was to make sure that we basically had full feasibility studies done. And now, we're doing design on our way into EIF so that we'll really be able to take advantage of the full project five-year time period. The second thing is, as the team has, and our teams have been working with the MCAs, as the MCAs, as we all know, are the primary implementers, how to give and assist with the capacity to manage these large-scale infrastructure projects, doing $350 million with the infrastructure in Lusaka in a five-year timeframe, very challenging for anybody. And what we could do to provide the assistance as part of the compact design, so the project management is there, in addition to the program leadership is another piece that we've built into the design. And I'd say the last thing, another thing, there's a number of lessons that we learned, but another significant one was we had in past compacts this period where we basically got to this point, and then we started to work with our partner countries on the infrastructure of the startup of the organization. And at this point in Zambia, we started that six months, a year ago. So, right now, for example, MCA Zambia is about to go out and interview the top leadership for, will become the leadership for the accountable entity, as we call it. And that should be off the ground in June versus starting right now, and that being off the ground six months, nine months from now. And all the other pieces of the program infrastructure have been started some time ago, so that we lessen the lag between today and entry into force, and we get to work with the Zambia people as quickly as possible.
Can you identify anything in particular that's new and innovative about the compact, the way it's been designed?
I think what stands out about the Zambia compact and the way it's been designed and this particular sector and how we got here is that the Zambia compact is really taking advantage of a lot of work that has come before it. So, the Zambians have been hard at work, hard at work with partners such as the World Bank, and the very serious, very arduous efforts of sector policy reform over the last 15, 20 years. So, they have a legal and regulatory framework that is sound and in place and has been in place. They have a utility that's functioning, that's in the black financially and operating quite well. They have an independent regulator that is providing them with cost-reflective tariff. So, this situation, pretty rare in water, in Sub-Saharan Africa, and we found it and find it in Zambia. So, that allows us to come in with the capital investment to help reward the hard work that's been done in the sector and really push that forward. So, I think that's a really salient piece of what's happening in Zambia versus Malawi, for example. It was a different story, it's a bit of a turnaround story for that sector as we face the energy sector there.
Just wanted to follow up with you about that answer, which is, policy is very important. And in fact, in the case of Zambia, policy has been ongoing for 15 years in the water sector. And I think one of the things that you have mentioned that's important is the fact that MCC now is looking to build on that 15-year history of policy reform. Can you talk a little bit more about that, why you think that's to both MCC's and the Zambia, and strategic advantage now to make this investment at this point?
Yeah, and one thing I want to make clear in the conversation as well is that while they have done a lot of work, things are by no means perfect in Lusaka, it is still a very difficult environment. There are still policy challenges to go, but they have come to this place where they're very ripe for sort of rapid expansion. So, moving forward, we still have a policy and a very serious policy program moving forward, both MCC and Zambia, and Zambia and their other partners. They're going to continue their program with the World Bank, which is largely focused on institutional strengthening. As part of our program with them, they agreed to what they've called a sustainability assurance agreement, which is, we're going to sit down with the Zambians every six months, the utility, the government, and say, all right, what benchmarks do you choose to keep progress on track? And select those benchmarks, and we've built them into the checks and balances of the compact, so that stays on track. So, I think that's, so looking forward, we've got a piece with the Zambians that recognizes the policy challenges remaining, works with the Zambians on those, provides them help and assistance.
Thanks. And so, I want to get Sheri and Jim into the conversation. I also wanted to mention that once I do ask a few questions of them, we want to open it up to you, so we're going to be happy to take your questions after that. Sheri is going to talk to us about the Niger threshold program. It's a threshold program that was reinstated by the board last year, and Sheri and her team have been working on the restart, the startup, restart-up of that program. And the first piece of it is going to be a $2 million investment in girls' education. Sheri, can you talk a little bit about what the objective is of the investment?
Sure. As many of you know, in the poorest countries of the world, the lack of quality, basic education is a major constraint to growth. And so, this was a huge priority for the government of Niger. It was an activity that we funded previously. We made a very significant investment in education, $17 million. When the program was suspended, we had constructed 63 school complexes, but we stopped short of funding those complementary activities that are so critical to get at the quality of education and the sustainability of the school infrastructure. And so, we're restarting those activities. We spent the time making sure that they were the right activities, they were consistent with the policy focus of the government. And we're investing in early-grade reading through the delivery of instruction in local languages, which is both a best practice and a government of Niger policy, a high-priority policy for the government to execute. We're focused on adult literacy, and we're focused on making more gender-equitable classrooms so that it's a much more inclusive environment for girls to learn.
The MCC has a new, newly revised threshold program, and this is going to be the first opportunity for us to be applying that new threshold policy. Can you talk a little bit about how that is playing out with regard to the development and design of the Niger threshold program?
Sure. Well, we are restarting activities from the suspended program. We try to integrate and incorporate some of the lessons that we learned from our threshold program review. And so, we've been partnering with USAID. This is a collaboration with USAID in a number of ways. First, USAID will be our partner in implementing this program, but USAID is also complementing our investments with investments targeted at the community level to strengthen the environment for learning and also for girls' inclusion. So, we're working with USAID, and we focused on incorporating more rigorous, evidence-driven project design. We were able to target our investments here into areas that look like they needed attention based on an impact evaluation that we had previously funded on the school infrastructure. It's very policy-focused programming. In this case, we're really targeting a constraint to growth, but the key objective here is to help inform the government of Niger's future strategies and investments in basic education. We're hoping to, with this rigorous impact evaluation, so that's another element from our more robust new threshold program, is that we're paying special attention to monitoring and evaluation. So, from this impact evaluation, what we hope to help, hope to learn ourselves and help to help support the government's learning is, what are the most cost-effective interventions? So, we know that the investment in hard school infrastructure that we made is not really replicable with the government's scarce resources for national investment. So, how can we learn about these soft interventions, both in MCC's built schools and also the Nigerians-built schools, to see what are some, what are some, what are some lessons that the government can draw in making future investments in basic education? So, the learning through rigorous monitoring and evaluation. Partnership, there's a strong partnership with the government here. For this to make sense, for this to work, and for this to be successful, the government had to be involved in helping us understand their priorities and implementing their policies and where they want to go. And we're doing that with the early-grade reading program, and also all of the community level interventions, the adult literacy program. So, those are the elements that we've brought into this activity. I should also mention, at the same time, MCC is working to develop a new threshold program with the government of Niger, under the new threshold concept. So, while we work to move these activities quickly, we're also standing up a new and larger program, partnering with the government to conduct a constraints analysis to growth, and also an analysis of the social sector, because as we talked about, Niger's, Niger's social indicators have always, have been extremely low. Niger ranks in 168 out of 169, 169 countries on the UN's Human Development Index. And so, we're going to be looking at, what are the constraints to economic growth, and what are the constraints to better social sector performance, and designing a program based on these diagnostics? So, we expect that program process, program development process will conclude at the end of the year, and we'll be able to present a new program there as well.
Thanks. Daniel mentioned that the board had a very robust discussion about the Malawi compact and the status of the compact. And it was a very vigorous discussion about what the right course of action is, and there was conversation about suspension, there was conversation about termination. One board member did support terminating the compact. It was a, it was a good discussion. And what I wanted to get from Jim is, before we talk about the decision, could you give us some sense of the history of the relationship with, between MCC and Malawi, and also a little bit about what's at stake?
Sure, Chuck. I'm glad to do that. As the CEO mentioned, the Malawi compact is one of the best structured compacts in our portfolio. The compact was prepared over several years in very close partnership with our Malawian counterparts, in the government and outside. There was an extensive consultation process with civil society. There was an analytical exercise to identify the binding constraint to economic growth and poverty reduction, which in this case was the lack of electric power. There was a significant feasibility studies carried out, significant studies, so the investments were well identified. And so, I'm referring to the point made by Andrew earlier, the importance of that level of preparation. And also, particularly specific to the Malawian case, there was a very significant sector reform program identified, because in contrast to the Zambian water sector, reform and institutional development in the power sector in Malawi had lagged behind. So, there was a recognition in the government that there was a need to amplify the impact of the physical investments through reforms geared in particular to attract private investment. So, that was the nature of the program, and as the CEO also mentioned, this program was projected to generate very significant net benefits on the order of $2 billion-plus, $2 billion-plus dollars, and has one of the highest projected economic rate returns in our portfolio. So, that's also to say that the stakes are very high for the beneficiaries. As things progressed, the compact was approved, as again, referring to the CEO, last April. However, in July last year, the compact was, well, and preparation towards launch began, but in July, in response to growing governance concerns, including the violent events in that month in-country, the compact was put on operational hold. MCC then began to work with the government to, first of all, communicate that our concerns regarding governance, and to make clear that the compact investment was at risk due to actions inconsistent with our good governance criteria, and to work with the government so that they could identify corrective actions. And as the CEO mentioned, we began to see some progress through the second half of the year, 2011. However, again, more recent events, particularly over the past 90 days, raised additional concerns and presaged the discussion in the boardroom yesterday. Just to touch on some of those specifics as to those recent events, the staff and the board pointed to the arrest of board pointed to the arrest of human rights activists, government statements threatening action against media outlets and journalists, prohibition of public meetings, and the arrest of a political party leader.
So the board made its decision yesterday to suspend. Can you give us an idea of what's next? Where do we go from here?
Well, the next steps are, first, to communicate in very clear terms with the Malawian government leadership, the basis for the suspension. And there, in MCC parlance, we talk of a very specific pattern of action that has led to the suspension. And also then, to make clear, again, as the CEO said, the ball is in the government's court, to make clear the expectations of both the MCC board in terms of concrete steps to change policy direction. And there, we can point to actions that begin to correct the steps to weaken the institutional and legal protection for democracy and human rights. We can point to action on some of these specific human right cases that have arisen. The very important need to provide accountability for the events of last July, there's a commission that is at work, but reports aren't enough, action will be needed. And then also on the economic side, to take steps to get the government, get the reform program, the macroeconomic reform program in particular, back on track with the IMF in order to create the enabling environment necessary for the MCC compact investments to work and generate the returns for the beneficiaries that we all hope to achieve.
So you've talked about some of the things that the Malawi government will have to do as we move forward. The board had a conversation about timing and a timeline. Can you talk to that? What sort of a timeline are we talking about for action and for the board making a determination about the status of the compact moving forward?
Well, again, referring to the remarks by the CEO, the board was very clear in its expectation that the situation begin to turn around, and it to be very clear and concrete steps in that direction between now and the next board meeting, which will be in June. There is an understanding that resolving some of the deeper institutional issues or economic issues may in fact take longer for the government to get fully on track and, of course, stay on track. That said, very clear and demonstrative progress is expected between now and the next board meeting.
Okay, thanks, Jim. So we wanted to open the floor up to you and your questions. If you do have a question, please raise your hand, and we'll have some microphones that will be passed. And when you, before you ask your question, if you could state your name and what organization you're with, that would be appreciated. Yes?
I'm Jim Michael. I'm an independent consultant in international development cooperation. I wanted to ask Sheri about the threshold program. With the lessons learned, with the changes being made, I wonder, it looks as if you're trying to be more specific about linking program objectives, timeframe, reasonable outcomes to be expected in that timeframe. And I wonder, are you changing the length, the duration of the threshold programs in cases where you really need to have a fairly ambitious objective to achieve your bigger policy objectives? And are you doing anything in the threshold program tying it to follow-on compacts to sustain the commitment and the reforms that the threshold program was trying to achieve? Sometimes, in the past, I know there's been a sort of a break where the threshold program comes and the compact comes, and there may be, you know, falling back during the period of compact performance where some continuity might help to avoid that.
Right. Thank you, Jim. Great questions. Well, in terms of setting up our new program, we're really excited to have four new countries to work with. Niger is an old partner, but a new effort is underway. We're working in Honduras, Nepal, and Tunisia as well. So we developed this concept based on the lessons learned, and you cited some of the lessons. The policy focus is shifting from the MCC indicators, which we found very, very hard to change, if not impossible, and in the timeframe that we had set aside for threshold programs. So the policy focus will be targeting constraints to growth. And that's both relevant to our eligibility criteria, but as you say, there's a strong linkage to what we might eventually do if the country becomes a compact partner. And of course, that's the goal of the threshold program, is to help these countries to become compact partners. So the policy focus is on binding constraints to growth, and we'll identify them through a much deeper diagnostic process. The partnership element with the government, the country ownership, is really important to our new concept because what we found is that there wasn't always a deep enough commitment in our old threshold programs to the policies that were the subject of the program. You also cited the program logic, is there a very clear program logic? So we hope to go from the binding constraints to growth, to the policies and institutions that contribute to those constraints to growth, to a set of reforms that the government commits to, to some activities to support them in implementing. So the program logic, I hope, will be very, very clear going forward. And I hope that we can set some reasonable timeframes. One of the things that we found in the earlier programs was that they were really, really big and complex, and they focused in many policy areas. And so what we're going to do going forward is really, really focus on one to two areas and a very defined, well-defined set of activities to support a very well-defined set of reforms. So we hope that a more realistic timeframe is three years. But we also don't see a conflict between a country doing these reforms and then moving on to compact eligibility. Because, as you said, the continuity between the two program vehicles that MCC has is much clearer, since we're all focused, both the compact and the threshold, on addressing those binding constraints to growth. So we don't see a problem with the overlap. We don't see that it'll take away the incentive behind the reform effort, as we saw in some of the earlier programs, that they lost their focus. So we see a strong continuity. The program is better tied to our overall mission of poverty reduction through growth. And we'll also probably see an overlap with the policies that are in our eligibility criteria, but the goal won't be to move those indicators. Thank you.
Next question? Yes.
Hi, my name is Lauren Wagonzki from Nexen Inc. Question I have regarding Malawi. In the event that the board decides in June to move forward with activities in Malawi, how will that affect the status of the compact? Would it be reset or you'd have to start work over again? More or less, what would the timeframe be for the compact if it was accepted?
First, our expectation is that by June, the government can indeed take actions to show that there's a change in course. But we don't actually expect that they would be able to take enough action to lift the suspension. That's not our expectation. It could happen, but it's not our expectation. If and when the suspension were to be lifted, our assessment is that the compact as designed remains viable and will be so, will remain so, for the next, up to 12 months, say. So we're not expecting in short a reset.
Yes?
Good morning. My name is Dino Srilastra. I'm the unfortunate project manager for the Malawi feasibility study. There was an input to the compact. So I have a very vested professional interest in this. What I wanted to ask Mr. Parks and Mr. Mayock particularly is, there is a very short window, and having worked in Malawi extensively, I'm very aware of the space at which things move. In 90 days, have there been actually, has there been an official communication that has gone to the highest levels in the government with very specific requirements and timetables of what they really need to do and demonstrate that they're doing it?
Short answer is yes. Yes, there has. Both in terms, you know, on issues before, after the operational hold, all through that time, and as well after the board decision yesterday. Yes.
My name is Alfred Shiroza. I'm the researcher and affairs for Zambia. Before I pose my question to Sheri, I would like to thank MCC for the decision to give Zambia the compact. We are very grateful, and we appreciate that gesture. Thank you so much. And we'll continue to, you know, uphold, you know, governance issues to the satisfaction of the world and democracy. Thank you so much. Sheri, please don't misconstrue me to mean that I'm poking my face into other people's affairs, no. But I would like to find out, on the issue of the airport you were putting up in Niger, Mali, sorry, I'm awfully sorry, in Mali, yeah. And you had only barely six months to go. Sorry, Jim, not, excuse me, Sheri. You had six months to go. My fear is, what if governance issues don't improve, say, for 10 years, 20 years? Who's the loser in this case? Thank you.
I think Ambassador Williams answered the question more eloquently than I could. It's the region, it's the beneficiaries, it's the people of Mali, all the people of Mali, and it's the region. These issues are in the hands, the governance issues, be they democratic governance, be they economic governance. In our partnership, these are the responsibility of our partner country governments, and we expect them to live up to their responsibilities as we live up to ours. The consequences can be very, very dire if they fail to live up to those responsibilities. But that's the nature of accountability.
Okay. Other questions? Yes, here.
Thank you. This question is for Andrew. I'm Gene Brantley with RTI International, and I have a sort of technical question about the Zambia project. I'm interested in how non-revenue water is being taken into account in the project design phase. For the audience, if you don't know, non-revenue water is water that a utility produces but doesn't get paid for, either because it's lost through pipes, or it's not billed, or it's given away for various reasons. So I'm wondering if, in any old system, dealing with non-revenue water is very much an operational issue as much as new construction. So I'm wondering how that's being dealt with and whether that will be factored into the sustainability agreement and benchmarks.
Thank you. And non-revenue water, as you point out, is a significant and major issue for Lusaka, as it is for many other countries and in many other cities. And it is addressed in the compact, and broadly speaking, it is very central to the compact, and it shows up in both our infrastructure investments and our technical assistance. So serious resources will be, are being provided to Zambia to address that largely through the main transmission line. It is a real focus to get the foundational infrastructure in place to lower technical losses, which are about, they're close to 50% right now. We're projected to bring them down to more like 25% over the course of the compact. And it is a cornerstone key feature to address that problem earliest and at the base of the compact.
Casey?
Hi, I'm Casey Dunning with the Center for Global Development. I actually have two questions. The first, could you offer a little more detail about the difference between the compact being on hold versus suspension, and what that means for MCC and Malawi? And then second, has there been any discussion about extension authority on the Mali compact? Because there's only six months left. Thanks.
First, on Mali, to say there's no discussion of extension, and we don't expect an extension. At this point, where our activities have been halted, they're on hold, and we're analyzing the situation together with our counterparts in the US government, its state and elsewhere. Vis a vis the Malawi situation, the specific difference between operational hold and suspension is, at the time of hold, we made a statement to the effect that we would investigate further in order to determine whether the events of last July and other related concerns represented a pattern of actions inconsistent with MCC's eligibility criteria. At this point, unfortunately, in the context of suspension, the staff have identified such a pattern, and that pattern has been confirmed by the board in the board vote. And that pattern of action, to give you some specifics on it, is centered on democratic governance. There are three key factors to it. First are the events of last July, where the police used force, excessive force, in our view, resulting in significant loss of life. And as of this point, there hasn't been clear accountability for those actions, in our view. We also have seen certain changes in the legal and institutional framework for democratic rights in Malawi, and this covers areas of freedom of expression, freedom of assembly, LGBT rights, media freedoms, access to the courts as well. We've also seen, and I mentioned some of these, we've seen a growing number of individual cases. Each case is complex, but stepping back, we've seen a pattern, what we call a pattern. Accepting the complications of each individual case, we're seeing a pattern here. So these are the three core factors in the pattern of action that underlie the decision of the board to suspend the compact.
As Jim suggests, a principal difference between the operational hold and the suspension is that the operational hold is a management decision, and the suspension is a board decision. So what happened yesterday is that the board made the decision to suspend. Right.
Just to be clear, we are not dispersing funds. We do not have ongoing activities under the Malawi compact, and have not since the time of the operational hold.
Okay. Next question?
Good morning. Thank you very much for your presentations. My name is Jorge Burgess, and I work for the United Nations Office for Project Services. My question is to Andrew. I would like to know if, at this point, you know, or you can expand more on the priorities that will be defined as part of the compact in Zambia? Do you have an idea what those priorities will be? And the other question is, you mentioned that part of the experiences and learnings that you're bringing from other compacts to Zambia is the integration of project management into the design. I would like to see if you can expand more on how that will be integrated into the tender or how that changes.
A couple of things to mention broadly about Zambia. Just number one, as to its overall structure. As I mentioned, there's two basic pieces, there are infrastructure and technical assistance. On the infrastructure side, there is, we're going to address water supply, we're going to provide the support for MCA Zambia to address water supply, sanitation, and drainage. And there's significant infrastructure investments across those three asset classes. And then inside, in addition to that, that brings with it engineering resettlement services that come with any large-scale infrastructure process like that, and a certain amount of technical assistance in order to help Lusaka Water, the utility in particular, manage the utility better. So they'll be doing, for example, an inventory, an asset inventory, as part of the technical assistance. So they have a very highly-defined understanding of what they have and what they need. As an example, the piece of the kind of technical assistance that's going to come along with As to your second question and the project management piece, right now, what we've worked with our Zambian partners on is the identification of the need of the project management team and the basic integration of that into their organizational design. Over the coming months, as they get their leadership team in place in June... Over the coming months, as they get their leadership team in place in June, in June-July timeframe, and as they bring on their senior directors for the various areas, how that management unit comes into play is going to be tightly defined and pursued.
Yes, question right here.
Thanks. Russ Webster, how are you all doing today? I have a different type of question. I think one of the things that's very interesting about MCC is it's provided all of us in the development field to look at a different approach. And I think it's provided a great, not only a great service to the recipient countries, but also a little bit of a learning lab in terms of how we prioritize assistance and how we make decisions. And I'm just wondering, in light of the recent, very thoughtful decision about Malawi, and now in the face of Mali, that puts the MCA compacts on a little bit of a pedestal in terms of how we make decisions about foreign assistance. And of course, as we all know, foreign assistance is a bit under attack right now by a lot of stakeholders, many of them up on the Hill. So my question, it's partly a question, but also partly, I think, an offer. The question is, do you feel that decision-makers up on the Hill are really appreciating the criteria that you use, and now, I think, the obvious enforcement of those criteria? Are they appreciating that this is a framework that, I think, speaks to a lot of concerns, like you've got Ted Poe concerned about results, and you've got the American public who says they don't want us to spend 20% of our budget on foreign aid, they'd be fine with 10%? You know, all these crazy...
We might also be fine.
Yeah, of course. Well, but I think this real-life compact experience that MCC has had over the years, and that experience is growing and accumulating, provides a great opportunity, and I'm sure you've thought about this already, it's not new, but it provides a great opportunity to say, here's a USG-supported, public-private kind of partnership entity that's taken some tough decisions, and do the folks up on the Hill appreciate that enough? And now, it's great to hear that your budget has come through, and it looks pretty good. But I'm just, that's just a general question. But also, the offer is, you know, many of us...
I was waiting for the offer.
Yeah.
And I accept.
Yeah, exactly. You know, we're directly affected by the Malawi decision. As you know, we were selected for the fiscal agent and procurement agent work. And so, but I still support the decision, because I think as an overall framework, it's important to have some criteria. So the offer is, and I'm sure many of us would step forward to offer to do this, to the degree that we can be helpful in reinforcing that message, that there are some ways to make tough decisions and stick to them, and be responsible, and that foreign aid is not just about spending money on high-paid consultants, but it's really about trying to reach some effective goals, and here are some real-life examples. But I just wanted to get some comments on what the tone is up on the Hill, from your perspective, about some of these issues and the work that MCC is doing.
So the conversations are ongoing and have been, you know, we've been engaging very much with the Hill on this issue. I think there is a full appreciation of the non-traditional approach that MCC represents. I think the key decision-makers on the Hill, the appropriators and the authorizers, are very aware of MCC, very aware of what the MCC is about, what our value proposition, what makes us different. I think we do have good bipartisan support on the Hill. I think one of the things that folks on the Hill do, you know, when they think about MCC, they think about accountability, and they think about our model, which is based on these fundamental principles of governance. And so I think there is a lot of awareness, a lot of buy-in to that, and then there's also an expectation. And the expectation is that MCC is going to live up to that. And so a lot of the conversations we have are country-specific, in which members of Congress are coming to us and saying, you know, we have some questions about a certain country, and we're interested in what your perspectives are. And I think what they're looking for, in the case of Malawi, in a case like Malawi, is for us to live up to that model, and live up to our principles. And I think that's what the board did yesterday. So we are constantly engaged with the Hill. You mentioned Representative Poe. Representative Poe's staff have been to the MCC. We've had a lot of consultation with them, particularly around monitoring and evaluation, accountability, and results. And so we were in close communication with him as he developed his bill on MENA for around development. So a lot of close relationships on the Hill, particularly with the key stakeholders. We continue to have conversations. They continue, you know, we hold ourselves accountable, they hold us accountable as well. So I think the answer to your question is yes. And I would like to accept your offer of help, and that's true of everybody here. Anything that you can do to support the MCC and support the MCC model would be helpful.
I'm trying to get it to 10%.
You and me both. Yes.
Good morning, ladies and gentlemen. My name is Foster Fandi, and I am a human rights activist from Malawi, based in Atlanta. I don't know if we have Malawians today here from the embassy, I don't know, but I came all the way from Atlanta yesterday, just because of the decision, I mean, at risk today. I'm extremely disappointed, really, extremely disappointed with the decision today. I understand the decision, where you made the decision today, but I receive so many emails, so many letters, so many calls every single day from Malawians, those in the villages, you know, asking why. As we speak, I know politicians don't tell you this, that as we speak this morning or yesterday, kids or the vulnerable are dying in the hospitals today because of rationing of electricity. They don't tell you this when you meet them. They don't tell you this. As I speak right now, probably 90% of, for example, my own grandmother has never seen electricity in her entire life, like so many women in Malawi. This would have made a huge difference to Malawian people, I'm telling you. So it's my plea to you, please, next time when you want to do review, not just look for these people in the government, or the same people you talk to in my part, you know, activists in my part, civil society organization, expand your real eyes on to talk to different people. I'm telling you, people are dying. I went last year to Malawi, just because I received so many of these calls to see myself. And what I saw broke my heart. And I'm telling each and every one of you, if you have a time to go to Malawi, just go. Just don't go in the cities only, go to the villages and see for yourself. And you come back here, the decision will be different. Believe me in this one. So, just like somebody just asked for an offer, I'm telling you, right now, I'm unemployed. I took some money from my own retirement to come here, or to go to Malawi last year, just to see what situation is in Malawi. And I'm offering to you that if you want somebody to bridge the gap between the government, what you hear from the government, and what you hear from the civil society, I'm willing to help you. I'm willing to bridge that gap, really, I'm going to use my own resources, but I need your help. Please, please, please. I know 90 days is not enough. I just hear from Jim, it looks like they have already made a decision that in June, they're going to terminate this compact. Please, 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 help us. Help us, please. Yesterday, I just received an email, yesterday, saying two people, two kids died in Balaka Hospital, just because of electricity rationing. Companies are closing day, I mean, every single day, right and left, closing and parking and go. Economy is so sad, it's so sad. People, every single day, just lining up just to get gas, they can't. You know, Forex is just, they can't find Forex. Forex. I know IMF is working on this, but folks, go in the village and see what people, actual real human beings are facing every single day. Don't listen to politicians. They have electricity in their houses, they don't care. Even if it's raining today, they don't care. But my grandma, I don't want my grandma to die tomorrow without seeing electricity. They walk so many kilometers away, distance, just to go fetch for firewood to heat their houses or to cook. And if you go to Malawi today, you'll see how naked the country is. There's no trees. You know why? Because people use firewood to heat their houses. We can make a difference with this 250 million compact in Malawi. We can open up, you know, the market, we can open up, people can have the ability to open up small businesses, you know. At least they can see electricity. You know, we take for granted here, you know, when one day we have maybe even for 30 seconds no electricity, we all go bananas. My friend, in Malawi, as I speak today, they have only maybe four hours a day of electricity. How can you succeed in business like this in Malawi? Please, please, please. I want the next time, if you have anything at all, I want to be there. As I said, I'm going to use my own resource, I don't need your resources. I don't have anything. I don't work, I'm unemployed. I saved something from my 401K, I'm using it right now to help people in Malawi as I speak. I'll do anything in my power. I'll talk to the government, I'll talk to anybody you want me to talk to. I'll organize a meeting in Malawi. I'll do anything you want me to do. But consider us, please, please, please. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Thank you very much for that. I think that was very moving. I would like to say a couple of things to you in response. First, to say that we have not taken a decision, the board has not taken a decision to terminate the compact. What the board has done is suspend the compact, and to make clear that the ball is in the government's court to take the appropriate actions needed to change policy direction. We do understand the stakes are high. In designing the compact, as I mentioned earlier, there were extensive consultations with civil society and with, and throughout the country, to identify electric power as the binding constraint, not only on growth, but, as I said earlier, poverty reduction. I'd like to relate to you, just very quickly, a personal story. Before I had this gray hair and I wore this suit, I was a Peace Corps volunteer in my earlier US government experience, in a mountain village in Nepal. Now, of course, it's not Malawi, but nevertheless, a very poor area. There was no electricity. It wasn't a question of limited power, there was no power. I lived, in fact, in a health post, and as, taking a room in the health post, and I saw people die, my friends, from lack of care. So I know what it means. The stakes are high, the ball is in the government's court. With your help, and the help of others like you, we hope that direction can change.
I also wanted to add to Jim's remarks that some of the points that you made were specifically discussed at the board meeting, and the board is very aware of the compelling need in Malawi. And that's one of the reasons why this decision-making process has been so deliberate. And it is because the board does understand the stakes, does understand the need, and understands how powerful this compact could be. And that's one of the reasons why, I mean, why we're so saddened at having had to make this decision. So what we want to do, as Jim said, is work with you and others to try to move the government in the right direction so that we can lift the suspension, so we can move forward with the compact, so we can improve people's lives and save people's lives and make a difference. So that's what we're trying to do. So we want to work with you to do that.
We're committed to that.
Yes.
Very quick comment to what you said. I have received no less than probably, I would say since last July, close to 100 telephone calls from Malawians that I work with. When I worked on the project, the feasibility study that went into the compact, I traveled with my team members and so on to approximately 300 different locations all over Malawi. So I very much understand, know, and I myself, just connecting with you, Mr. Parks, until the age of 11, I had no running water or electricity where I grew up in India, which is a long time ago. So I understand what it's like, you know, and I also understand how exciting and incredible it is when you flip that switch and you have the light on. I have responded to the Malawians who have called me, there have been private people, engineers from Escom, people in the government departments and so on, that a lot of the message, very similar to what you just said, really needs to be given back to the government, to the leadership. That's where really the solution is. So I have been in touch with MCC, I have not engaged in any technical discussions related to the compact with the Malawians, but this was the basic answer I give to every telephone call that I receive. But I wanted to now follow over the question to you, Mr. Parks. Is this document, or whatever this communication is, officially from the MCC to the Malawians, is this a private document which illustrates all the conditions and requirements and timetables, or is it a publicly available document?
Well, we are planning, thank you very much for the question, we are planning, of course, a press release to disseminate the decisions of the board, and that press release will include certain details, many of which I have presented to you today. We, of course, also will release a congressional notification, as per our statute, to the Hill, again, notifying our stakeholders on the Hill of this decision. We are discussing it here in a town hall. We have already communicated with the authorities. We'll communicate to them both in person, I believe, through our embassy in particular in Longway. We'll speak with them, we have spoken with them, and there'll be written communications. Of course, certain elements of that will be private. I think that's understandable.
Yes.
Thank you. Kaliber Rodo from Gopa. I really agree with the gentleman from Malawi regarding the compact, but if we look at the situation, for example, in Madagascar, the compact has been terminated, right? But the World Bank has decided just a few months ago to resume the projects implemented in Madagascar. Because, and why did the World Bank do that? I mean, the MCC has terminated this compact, but not the World Bank. So because the people need that money, as the gentleman said. And we all know that, you know, the government of Madagascar has not been recognized, right? But why the World Bank did this? Because the people need that money and the project. So maybe that, you know, could be an idea, I don't know.
Well, we can't speak to decisions by the World Bank.
Yeah, because, I mean, it's an international organization, very well reputed, and why not taking any of the example?
Well, actually, Jim has spent years at the World Bank, and has been at the MCC, I guess, for a little bit over a year. Do you want to just talk a little bit about that, about MCC in particular? About, to answer the specific question about why?
Right.
Why terminate, or why suspend or terminate?
As I said, I don't think we can speak to the World Bank. I did spend many years there, and we'd be glad to talk to anybody who's interested about my specific experience there, but that's, I don't think, the point. MCC has, in the development community, has a very specific approach, I think, as you know. And we have high standards on governance, on democratic governance, on economic governance, and within economic governance, in investing, the governments invest in their people. We have very specific criteria for that, and that's how we identify the partner countries that we work with. As part of our partnerships, as I mentioned earlier, we put a very high premium on accountability. We have very high accountability standards for ourselves. Chuck was mentioning that we have very serious accountability to our stakeholders, including those in Congress who are stewards of US taxpayer funds. And we, in turn, have high standards for our partners. We expect them to hold us accountable, and we hold them accountable. And all of this is with a very specific set of objectives in mind, because we know from development experience that aid works, but only when conditions are in place for it to do so. And those conditions include good governance across a wide spectrum. And that's evidence of 50 years or more of development, and we're founded on the principles of effective aid, and we try to stay true. In fact, we are committed to staying true to our principles. We understand the costs to our beneficiaries, intended beneficiaries, when programs are suspended. suspended or terminated. But as I mentioned earlier, in these regards, when it comes to governance, it's the responsibility of our partners. We have to be clear in accountability, who's responsible for what. Otherwise, things become a muddle. And in this case, the accountability is with the governments and the consequences are theirs.
Thanks, Jim. You asked a question over here.
Good morning, panelists and audience. My name is Galen Hall with Independent with Hall International. My question steps a bit outside the box of the questions that preceded it. The Chinese in recent years have done a lot of investing in developing countries, in Africa in particular. And in certain places such as Sudan and South Sudan, they have enough economic clout that they could probably have some influence on the outcome in that conflict. My question then for the panel is, is there any sense in which MCC projects, specifically infrastructure projects, either compete with or complement Chinese investments specifically in Africa?
Well, the way I would answer that question is to say the following. When we identify a compact investment, we carry out, together with our partners, in fact, they carry out and we support, a very extensive and widely cast preparation process. I mentioned the consultations. I mentioned the analytic work on the binding constraints to growth. Related to that as well are the government's overall, particularly partner governments' overall strategies for economic growth, economic development and poverty reduction. Our investments, therefore, fit into a framework. And to the extent that other financiers of a particular partner country are also operating those frameworks, then our investments indeed would be complementary. That is certainly the hope that we have through the process that we've established in a very structured preparation process. Are there perhaps instances where there are, where there are substitutes or where there's competition? It could be, but it's certainly not our objective.
I think we have time for one more question? Yes? Yes?
Suggestion. My name is Yaya Fanusi. I am the Special Operations Division Head for the United States of Africa 2017 Task Force. To speed up the reaching of the services to the people, the poor people of Malawi, is that people should start calling the president in Malawi and tell him to act properly. Everybody here could do that and that's a campaign you should start. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you very much for that comment. And I wanted to thank all of you for being here. I wanted to remind you that go to our website for the most recent information about MCC. Particularly, there will be a video and a transcript of this meeting if you want to reference it later. So I'd like to thank our panelists and thank all of you for coming and hope you have a great day. All right. Thank you. 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 Thank you.